Good evening, good evening. This is American Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson from the church. What's happening? Well, we're out in Plainfield. You know, next week will be the 5th, and I believe next Tuesday will be the 5th of November, and everybody around the state is getting ready to vote. There's many people running for mayor in the city of Plainfield, and I'm back down here in Plainfield. I just left my office in New York to come down here to cover the debate. I believe there's a favorite here, and I won't call him because of the little tangy thing, it'll sound like I support him. But tonight will be the debate, Plainfield Legal, uh, Plainfield League of Women Voters. And I've covered them three or four times, maybe five. And I tell you, it's always an exciting thing to be in the crowd where they act. They seem to, it's so professional where they handle themselves. So again, American Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson from the church. What's happening now, he had Emerson School in Plainfield, which is one of their more luxury schools and everything. I heard his computer operating. I wish I was from an iPad, I probably would've got right online. But we're gonna cover it tonight and be ready for next Tuesday and see, you know, who's gonna be the mayor of Plainfield, New Jersey. All right?
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Regina Dagle Gray. I am the president of the League of Women Voters, the Plainfield Chapter. I'd like to introduce you to our timekeepers this evening. Rupert Crawford, our past president. Rebecca Williams, our councilwoman. And our moderator this evening would be Arlene Siggaglia. Sig- Siggaglia. This evening, our program for this portion, for Board of Education, has three parts to it. The first part is the opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. The candidates are, to my immediate left, Mrs. Will McCampbell. To her, immediate left, Mrs. Deborah Clark. To her, immediate left, Mr. Richard Lear. To his, immediate left, Mrs. Annabelle Melgar. To her, immediate left, Mr. Frederick Moore, Sr. And to his, immediate left, Mr. David Rutherford. Now, we drew positions for opening statements, and Mrs. Melgar came in first, so she will make the first opening statement of two minutes. The timekeeper has two cards, a yellow card, which will mean that you have 30 seconds left to respond, and then the red card means you need to stop, but you may finish your thought. Before we do that, excuse me for one second, but we will not be doing the fourth ward debate this evening. Is Mrs. Rivers here?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can come to the table. Okay. The reason for that is Mrs. Rivera is ill and is unable to make it, and based on the policy, we don't have a debate if there's...
No.
Now, at the opening statements for school board candidates, and Mrs. Melgar, two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Annabella Melgar, and I'm so happy to be here. And I thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here. And having grandchildren at the school system brought me to run for the school board. And because I don't feel that they get what they, the education that they deserve, I will support parental involvement training. Being a homemaker, a homeowner in Plainfield, knowing how much we pay in taxes, I will be responsible with tax dollars, ensuring funds will not be mismanaged. I will work and support administration to get rid of unaffected programs and institute programs that have been trying to ruin. If you will let me preach a few, preach a clear, Deborah Clark, and myself, Annabella Melgar, we will work as a team, and we will do the best that we can, so we will work to make a better school system. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please hold your applause so we can move on and get as many questions answered as possible. Mr. Rutherford.
My name is David Rutherford. I was born and raised in Plainfield, and I attended the Plainfield Public Schools. When I was 18, I moved away. I moved to Philadelphia for Architecture School, and then later to France, where I worked as an English teacher in a middle school, and then as an architect. Also, as an adult, I became a more active citizen, politically active. So it only makes sense that upon resettling in Plainfield, I've become more active in my own community. I believe that schools are the pillar of not only Plainfield, but any city. And the strength of schools is why the attack on public education is so vicious. Despite these attacks, I believe we can continue to improve our schools globally, and I want to contribute what I can to these efforts. It's in the best interest of the school board to have an architect like myself that can look at many capital improvement projects in the pipeline for the district's best interest. I also have a perspective of having taught in another system in France. I don't plan to have all the answers. I don't think anyone has all the answers. And the jobs and duties of the school board are very complex, but I assure you that I have the best intentions, that I have a love for the city of Plainfield. I now have friends from all around the world, and they know where I'm from. I don't mean the US or New Jersey, I mean Plainfield. People that know me also know how hard of a worker I am, how seriously I take commitment and service, and that I stand up for my beliefs, some of which are equality education for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us to this forum. I have worked in education for the past 47 years, and urban education is more specific. With the experiences that I've had in the classroom, as a classroom teacher, as a dean of students, and a coach, during these years, I have come to be able to address some of the academic and social problems that students have, and we all understand. And many of the outside influences have both positive and negative impact on the academic and social, their academic and social success. The students that we educate must be afforded all tools necessary to allow them to reach their maximum potential. I have an interest, an extra interest also, because I have a granddaughter who is in the 7th grade at Cedar Brook School. So with the expertise that I've been able to gather over all of these years, I think that I am one of those qualified beings to be elected for the Plainfield Board of Education along with David and Will. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Clark.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Clark, and I'm running for the Board of Education. I am a product of the Plainfield school system. My children attended the Plainfield schools. My grandchildren are now in the system. My grandchildren are now receiving the quality of education that I received when I decided, that's why I decided to run for the Board of Education. My mission is to work with the board and the administration to provide a more challenging and comprehensive curriculum for all of our students. I want to assure that all students in Plainfield have the opportunity to graduate from high school and be prepared to go to work or college of their choice. When our students earn a degree from Plainfield High School, it will enable them to new responsibilities and become teachers and entrepreneurs and business owners, executive and elected leaders as yourselves. In order for the student to get the education they deserve, we need dedicated and caring board members and administrators that will use the resources wisely and efficiently. I would like every school's mission to not only enrich the minds of the children, but also develop their character through mentorship and community involvement. That's why I need your vote and your support. For me, and my running mates, Annabella, Annabella Melgar, Richard Lear, and myself, Deborah Clark. So please, go to the voting line and vote 1, 4, and 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Campbell. Good evening, and welcome to what is an opportunity for you to find out what the school district is all about and what the board members are supposed to do. I thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up. It's always a wonderful opportunity to come and boast of the many things that our school district, our present school board, is doing. I'm grateful, very grateful, to have the opportunity to serve as a board member, and I'm pleased to say that I am part of a board that is collaborative, engaged, and very committed to the students of this district. I do not come with a singular interest, I come with the interest that all 8,000 students in this district are fully served. I think it's important that we put the priority of excellence at the very top of the list and political maneuvering to the side. Our team is very devoted to educating our children, and educating them to the point that they will be competitive and able to compete with students from all over the country, not our closest neighbors, but across the entire country. We've made strides. We have increased enrollment. We have increased graduation rates. We have the largest graduating class this past year that we've seen in over 10 years. We are engaged, and for that, we came and we did what we said we would do, and we want to continue doing even more. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lear, please hold your applause.
Hello. My name is Richard Lear. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here, the opportunity to speak. I'm a member of the Van Buitbroek Historic District, and in 2012 and in 2013, we decided to give a scholarship to Plainfield High School students. I was on the committee. When we received the packets from these children, I was rather alarmed by the fact that these children were bright and could tell by their essays that they weren't capable of forming a complete essay. Then I looked at their SAT scores. One of the students had a 4.5 GPA. She had done five courses through her entire high school career and was ranked in the very top of her class, and her SAT score the third time she took it was 1310, over 200 points below average for the state of New Jersey. Now, there are studies done that say that African-American and Latino children don't fare well on standardized tests, but one would think that if you had taken applied courses through your entire high school career, you would at least score average. Then I met these children, and they were intelligent, they were smart, they were bright, they had a fire inside, and it made me angry that they didn't get the education they deserve. From there, I learned that our district is ranked 529 out of 558 districts in the state of New Jersey. Our high school is ranked last in Union County. The state has what they call priority or focus schools, which are the bottom 5% in the state, and they monitor these schools for three years. If the district has done nothing to improve this, they step in, and we had four last year, and this year we have six. Our board has allowed our schools to decrease by 50%. I don't find this acceptable in any way, and all of this drove me to run for the board. If you elect me, Richard Lear, Deborah Clark, and Annabella Melgar, we will work diligently to pull our schools out of the bottom of Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now into the second portion of the program, and that is your questions. Because we're interested in issues rather than in personalities, your questions should be confined to the issues. You may address your question to a specific candidate or generally to all candidates, but all candidates will have the opportunity to respond. If you need an index card, just raise your hand, and somebody will be around and give you one, or if you want to turn in a question, just raise the card, and a nusher will come to your seat at the same time. Okay? The candidates will have one minute to respond to the questions that are coming in, they're gonna be asked in rotating order. And the first question, and Mrs. Campbell, you'll be answering this one first, asks, "Plainfield had a high, highly rated school system and sports program. Both have fallen into hard times. How do you explain this, and how would you fix it?" Plainfield students are comprised of some very important numbers that we look at when we talk about student performance. 85% of our students are afraid to do lunch. We have 28 different dialects here in the district. 17% of our students are receiving special services. So when you look at those particular statistics, it takes, it takes special programs to increase or improve those circumstances. What we have put in place in terms of special academic programs, and those programs contoured towards those particular problems, those particular issues, those particular kinds of programs are in place, and we are evaluating them as we go along. The process is in place. We are moving in the right direction. We have worked to make sure that we have corrected and addressed these problems, and we're improving, we're improving student performance. Thank you. Mrs. Clark. Do you need the question repeated? No, I'm sorry. I make the order as to who's answering the questions. Oh, you want to pass on your turn? Oh, okay, well then, Mr. Lear, you're going third.
According to the information I found, Plainfield High School is made of 45% Latino, or the school system, 45% Latino, 50% African-American, and 5% other. 63% were on the lunch program. The reality is, our schools need a major overhaul. The way we're gonna, we're gonna correct this is from the start at the top of the administration. Teachers have three years to be given correct evaluations, so that they're headed in the right direction, so that they do good work in the classroom. Our administrators are responsible for this. That's how we'll correct our problems.
Thank you. Mrs. Melgar. Pass. Okay. After everybody. Mr. Moore?
Some of the ways and means that we have to improve our, I'll start with the athletic program. We're going to have to meld both the early, early learning programs, such as the little aid program, and merge those programs, not merge them, but coordinate them with the high school programs, so that we can get a better product. We also have to make sure that our coaches are going to clinics and meeting those particular needs, so that they can be up to date with all of the nuances, and we're in football seasons, so football, for example. Academically, we have put in place a lot of the tutorial and remedial programs that are necessary for these students to improve. Students are coming to us with, with academic problems, and we are working toward improving them now.
Thank you. Mr. Rutherford.
As Mr. Moore and Mrs. Campbell have said, I don't think that we necessarily need an entire overhaul of the system. We're moving in the right direction already, and there's a lot of factors that affect both teachers and student performance, supporting administration and so forth. I believe we can tweak those things, as I already stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal? Anybody rebuttal? 30 seconds for rebuttal, and then just the red card goes up after 30 seconds. We cannot ignore the fact that we have seen bumps in our test scores. We have seen improvements to the lines of 20 and 30 points per area in ELA as well as math. We have a student who is in the top 3% of the country on SAT scores, so all is not as dismal as it is portrayed. Anybody? Mr. Moore?
When we, when we look at scores, we have to understand certain things. We have a mixed population, and you have to understand the fact that all of the test scores are melded into one to give you one specific number. So, certain individuals who are not adept in certain things will automatically have scores down, or the results down. So we gotta understand this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. You only have 30 seconds. Anybody else rebuttal? Mr. Lear?
According to the state of New Jersey, our system is, our high school is 41% proficient in math and 18% proficient in biology. I don't think that your ethnicity is any determination of what you deserve to learn. I don't think that anyone, I'm finished, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, 30 seconds goes very quickly. Okay. Next question is, "How many school board meetings have you attended in this last year?" And Mrs. Clark, you go first. I have attended one for this year. Mr. Rutherford?
I have attended seven.
Mrs. Melgar?
I haven't attended any, but I'm planning to, planning to attend.
Mrs. Campbell? I stopped counting at 20. Mr. Lear?
I have not had the opportunity. I was checking the website for the dates that they were available. Unfortunately, the website didn't have a year up in advance, and at this time, my schedule has been very busy. I've been trying to get through it, so I had this opportunity to run for the board, and to be able to select it.
Okay, that was, now we still have Mr. Moore to answer this.
I have attended each one except the last election.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that seven business meetings, the number is higher if you count the adjutant positions. Thank you.
I would like to remind the public that the meetings are posted on the website, and it is the tradition, as long as I've ever known, that meetings are the first and the third Tuesday of each month. Thank you. The next question, number three. "What are you going to do about the rezoning? All the schools are overcrowded. The kindergarten classes have 26 students or more." And Mr. Moore, you get to answer that question first about rezoning the schools due to overcrowding.
One of the things that we have to do is we have to deal with the study and make sure that the students who are living in a specific district are going to school in that specific area. We have a policy now where students can live in one area, and after October 15th, they can transfer to whatever school they want to. We have to fix that.
Mr. Lear?
I don't have any background in zoning. I think the smartest thing to do is to look at the school districts that have had this issue in the past, that are doing it successfully now, and see what they've done to improve upon what they did, and then apply those that apply to Plainfield, that apply to our demographics, and then work for our system.
Mrs. Campbell? The school district is currently in the process of conducting a rezoning assessment, the results of which have not been provided as yet, but this is an issue that has been studied over the past six months to the year, and we should be looking for the results to come out shortly. I wouldn't expect that, let's just face it, there's the dream team and there's the green team. The green team would not have a clue about such an issue because they're not engaged in the school district. Let's just put it out there as it is. Mr. Rutherford?
I don't have anything to add.
Mrs. Melgar?
I will, I will look into that and investigate because I don't have the answer.
Mrs. Clark? I don't have a question, but I would like to... Okay? I just want to say thank you very much for all your questions, but we're going to put a halt to the questions. I have more than enough to cover the time allotment that we have for this evening. So moving on to the next question, and that is, "What are the three to five strengths or accomplishments of the district besides its students, teachers, and families?" And Mr. Rutherford, you get to go first. Yes. "What are between three and five strengths or accomplishments of the school district over the past year, exclude student, teachers, and families?"
Excluding?
Excluding them as a strength. Now, I'm just...
One of, one of the strengths of the last year, before the last year, is the building of a true project-based learning program, specifically in the Office of Early Childhood under Evelyn Motley. Project-based learning means learning by doing. It's turning students from regurgitators, from learning something on Friday, memorizing it for Monday, and then forgetting it not long after, into creatives. And it's proven that through the creative process, students actually do better on standardized testing. So you don't have to teach to the test. All the new research shows that creation is the way students should learn, and I'm happy the board is making progress in that front.
Mr. Moore?
We have moved toward, toward an educational process where, again, students are no longer regurgitating information, but they're able to, they're able to deal with analytical learning. They're dealing with holistic education across all subject areas, and they're then able to grasp a little bit more, they're able to understand a little bit more.
Mrs. Melgar?
I, I know about the Montessori school, have you heard about it? That they, that they let, they let the children to create or work with, with things that they can, you know, they can learn in being capable of. So we, we are gonna do our best to improve all that in the student system. So we, we, we are gonna do our best to improve all that in the, in the system.
Mr. Lear?
I would say that project-based learning is a great, a great thing that we have going for this town. I think the other thing that, that we have are actually the children of this town. When I met with these kids, they were bright, they were intelligent, they have a very strong will to learn, and they want a great future. I think that that's one of the most important things this school has.
Mrs. Clark?
I agree with you, but we have a great ability, as a diverse community. And we also have the potential and ability to gain higher.
And Mrs. Campbell?
One of the facts that we can all relate to is the fact that a couple of years ago, the school board received the Q stat rating of eleven. We've been providing good governance. As a result of that, this board, the current city board, was able to rise to a rating of the high eighties. So I think that because of the good governance, the kinds of things we talked about doing, we've been able to initiate them, implement them, and see the results of our success.
Okay, next question. What will you do to get parents more involved with their children's education? And how will you overcome challenges such as language barriers, single-parent families working two jobs to make ends meet? And Mr. Lear, you get to go first. Yes. What will you do to get parents more involved with their children's education? And how will you overcome challenges such as language barriers and single-parent families working two jobs to make ends meet?
Um, there are programs that are available. Um, there's a school system in Delaware that they do, they started with kindergarten and the next year first grade and then second grade and so on, where half the day was English and half the day was Spanish. Um, this is a program I've been looking into, that it could be an applicable program because the demographic in the town in Delaware is the same demographic as Plainfield. Um, I think that that would be one track that children could be in, which would help promote their education. As far as getting the parents involved, I think creating a bridge between the school system and the parents is the first way to go.
Mrs. Melgar?
Um, we can create new pro- programs for, for the children and, uh, also it's a good idea for me if we get in touch with the parents, like person to person, because sometimes, um, they don't have the access. Or they don't know how to get to, you know, into, uh, or sometimes they just, um, how can I say, they pass. And they don't, don't get interested in, in the children. So, um, maybe we can do something with the parents, because sometimes we are close, very close society. But when we open to, to the public and like I said, person to person, that would be nice.
Mrs. Clark?
First, you have to draw a line of communication between the parents and the teachers. If you can get that done, we can get our district to win, or even how we would like it to be, by fostering and, and very touching interaction, which will lead the, uh, students to better grades and the students to good success.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Well, first, the person who asked that question should have been at our back-to-school programs that just completed last week. We had standing room only in many of the different schools. We had a back-to-school program at Woodland School where we had over five hundred people to attend, parents and families. We also have some other things that we can still do. We have a homeless population. We need to do some special kinds of things with our homeless population. And grandparents, a lot of grandparents are raising our children. So we've got to bring the mountain to Moses, and we've got to go more into the community.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
The perennial problem with PTAs and, uh, schools is that, yes, parents have to work and they do all of those things, but the basic thing that has to happen is that they have to feel that ease. They have to feel as though there is nothing adversarial, it's so that they can, they can come there. And when there are language differences, which there are, we have to make sure that there, there's interpretation, there's, there's the language piece, so that the culture is mixed, so that we can have a better situation.
Mr. Rutherford?
One of my idols in education is Jonathan Cozal, um, who, as, who says every year that he taught, he went to every student's house. Now, the school district of Toronto took this concept and they started doing community walks, where they walked around through the communities. And not only did they get a better rapport with, with the students and their families, but, uh, these were all types of administrators, teachers, everyone. Not only did that happen, but they also got teachers to organically tweak their curriculum to better suit the environment of their students. So it was good on both ends, and that's the type of idea.
Okay. Next question. Here it says, "The school board has a budget in excess of, um, a hundred thousand dollars." And I'm sure it's, like, guaranteed it's a lot higher than that. Um, the main question is, what experience or qualifications do you have with analyzing a budget of that size or even larger? And Mrs. Melgar, you go first.
Can you please repeat?
Yes. Um, "The school board has a budget in excess of a hundred thousand dollars," um, which is low. I mean, I think the school board budget is a lot higher than that. But the question is, what experience or qualifications do you have with analyzing a budget of that size or larger?
I think, um, as a team, we can work with that and, uh, and investigate or get into that to, to be wise and then to, uh, to know how to, how to decide as a team.
Mrs. Campbell?
Besides having served on the board for the past nine years, I also was an administrator in higher education. Through that experience, I had the opportunity to not only analyze, but to manage budgets upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars for a long, quite a long period of time. So my expertise, I would say, my background, my work experience, as well as the nine years that I've served on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
During the past year, I've worked with board members and I have learned much about managing, uh, large, large amounts of money. It's a hundred thousand dollars, not, uh, that's just a, a ballboard trade. But I've had experience during the past year of working with the board.
Thank you. Mrs. Clark?
The school budget, do you mean the question?
Yes. "The school bu- the school board has a budget in excess of, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars. What experience or qualifications do you have with analyzing a budget of that size?"
First of all, um, given the, um, school budget, the superintendent, we have to go with the superintendent, and she spends the money. And, um, our job as a board member will be going to adopt policies, make sure they go out, and make sure we evaluate. And I have experience in what to do when we are sick.
Um, Mr. Rutherford? Okay, yeah, Mrs. Clark, can you repeat the last part of your statement?
We will work with the board, with the board. Also, when it comes to the budget, um, the Board of Education, the adopt policy that's under the school district operator, and they operate that with the superintendent. And we will work with the superintendent to budget everything that has to do with the school needs.
Mr. Rutherford?
As an architect, everything is about the budget. I meet with contractors and clients every day. Your move is still being here, and it has ten thousand dollars to the cost. You have to keep it low enough. Um, where I work, they do a lot of design build. Um, the budget is really, everything has to work within the budget. And the projects I'm working on now are all between two and five million dollar jobs, and, uh, the budget is king.
Mr. Lear?
I worked for City Bank for a period of time, and I was in charge of tracking that five hundred million dollar budget. In addition to that, I organize a super diving trip once a year that goes to someplace in the world, and I'm responsible for about fifty-four different people's money that is going to the organization that we're going to and handling all of this. Besides that point, the reality is, according to the New Jersey School Board Association, our job is to adopt policies, to oversee the budget. I don't think that we're analyzing the budget. We're overseeing that the money is spent appropriately.
Okay, moving on to the next question. Knowing that the staff is working without a current contract, um, is subject to low morale, um, which negatively impacts our students, what would you do to make sure staff has contracts, they get regular pay raises like other neighboring school districts, and are paid fairly? And Mrs. Clark, you get to answer that first.
Repeat the question?
Yes, okay. Um, "The staff is currently working without a contract, and that subjects them to low morale, which negatively impacts students. What would you do to make sure the staff has contracts, that they're paid fairly, get regular pay raises like other neighboring school districts?" I don't have an answer to that question. Uh, I don't think we should. Lear? Okay, she's passing the right hand.
I don't have an answer for the question.
Mr. Rutherford?
I'm an advocate for the profession of teaching. Um, of course, I believe that teachers in this district and any district do deserve regular pay raises. Um, there is a budget, and you have to negotiate, uh, a contract. But yes, teachers do deserve pay raises. That's the question.
Mr. Moore?
I had just left a meeting the other night at three forty-five. I was talking about the same. One of the things that, uh, we all have to realize is that there, in the state of New Jersey, the ceiling amount of money that, uh, can be negotiated for is a two percent increase. Those are some of the constraints under which we have to work.
Mr. Lear?
This is actually a question I have myself. On Monday night, the teachers were picketing outside of Plainfield High School. I would think that that would severely hurt the morale of the students. From my understanding, there is a two percent raise in the budget for the teachers, but the contract expired on June of two thousand and twelve. Um, I read that the teachers have been without a contract for two years, and I don't really understand how that works. It expired on June of two thousand and twelve. But you can't put off someone's money. When, when you are working, you deserve a raise, if you deserve a raise, that raise has to be given. You can't drag your feet on it, and that's what the board has done.
Mrs. Campbell?
I'm glad to hear Mr. Lear does his research. But in the real world of what's going on with the district, there's a negotiating team. And there's a negotiating team that consists of two sides. One side is for the district, one side for the employees. What I've encouraged both members to do is negotiate and come out with a win-win for everybody.
Mrs. Melgar?
Um, the teachers, they are the ones who are the teachers who are sheep. They're heavy. I believe that if we want to have happy teachers, uh, we have to negotiate or evaluate, um, the contract. Because I know there are, there are many teachers that they love to teach and, okay, and, uh, they deserve to get well-paid.
Rebuttal, Mr. Lear?
I've been on the board of five committees for the professional union, SAG, Equity, AFRA, et cetera. And negotiation is a skill. As we all know, our government hasn't done it well. They shut the government down. Clearly, there is no negotiation going on if they've been sitting without a contract. You have to negotiate, and it's not happening for our teachers.
Mr. Moore?
To be understood, negotiation is a two-part deal. Both parties have to negotiate. If one party refuses to negotiate absolutely in good faith, there's trouble.
Okay, next question. Our school's ranked five hundred and twenty-ninth out of five hundred and fifty-eight, so we clearly need a change. What would you do to increase our ranking? Mr. Moore?
What we're doing presently is that we are upgrading the, the math curriculum. We're upgrading the English curriculum also. But the, the pieces that are, that are absolutely necessary in math are all dealing with analytical thinking. We are sending our educators to various clinics, if you will, for the lack of a better word, so that they can upgrade their understanding of what's happening. We're also dealing with the students who, who make the grade and ones who do not make the grade. The ones who do not make the grade because of the, the teaching pattern are educated in addition to the time that they, they have on that specific subject area.
Mr. or Mrs. Clark?
To move it from five twenty-nine to five, to, to move it from five twenty-nine further up. You don't want it further down. Um, smaller classrooms would be appropriate. Um, equip our teachers better, give them more, enjoy books, more information for students. Um, get, uh, make sure, make sure they evaluate our sup- our superintendents and even board members, make sure they evaluate efficiently.
Mrs. Campbell?
Repeat the question, please?
Yes. "Our school's ranked five hundred and twenty-ninth out of five hundred and fifty-eight, so we clearly need a change. What would you do to increase our ranking?"
First, I do not buy those numbers. That's dated information. If you Google it, it's on the New Jersey report cards with dated information from two thousand and six. That's first. But if we are not number one, I would continue to offer what we've done with the tutoring for all, which is a program opened up to all of the students, not only the students who are in the free and reduced lunch programs or who are, are high-risk students, but a program of tutoring that we've opened to all of our students. I just wish that the misinformation that is surfacing around here would not become the bible because it's not factual. Five hundred and twenty-nine is not the rating, the listing for two thousand and twelve. That is not accurate information.
Next question, next questioner is Mr. Lear.
I highly encourage you to go to the New Jersey Report card. This is a page from it right here. In 2010, we were 62% math proficient. In 2011, we were 46% math proficient. In 2012, we were 41% math proficient. You don't have to be a mathematician to see that those numbers are falling. This is not, these facts are facts. I'm pulling these from resources that are very incredible. We have to start at the top. It starts with administration, it starts with their superintendent, and we work our way down. Things don't go from the bottom up. These children aren't getting a bad education because the teachers don't want to give them a bad education. They're not giving the resources to the teachers, they're not giving the children what they need. The board is not doing their job.
Mr. Rutherford.
I'm going to pass this question.
Mrs. Melgar.
When I was reading that 529 and 558, that's terrible. And, but we can increase it or we can work because we have been working, Richard and Deborah together, and we have that passion to work into that, even though we don't know everything. But, you know, we have, we are willing to work. I know he works so much and she does and myself, we have a busy schedule, but I'm making a space because we want to be, it's terrible when we see that. But we want to work with passion.
Update your data, the graduation rate for 2013 was 80%. Obviously, we could not achieve that number, we couldn't make that number up. That's factual data. Your data is old. Do not make claims about what the board is not doing. You've never been to a board meeting. How would you know what the board is doing, Mr. Lear? I appreciate and I am not criticizing your interests, but the facts are that you are not reporting facts. Thank you.
Mr. Lear.
What I just stated is from the Department of Education's report card for Plainfield High School. It is the recent one that is on the website. I am getting my information about these schools from the Department of Education. I spoke to the Union County Board of Education for two and a half hours the other day about Plainfield schools. I'm talking to educators, I'm talking to board members, I'm talking to Department of Education for New Jersey. I'm not making this up. I'm gathering things that are readily available.
Okay, next question. The tutorial and academic programs don't always work. They appear to be uncoordinated and change on a whim, often losing our children because of these changes. How can you fix this? Mr. Rutherford.
Well, obviously, we need consistency in what's being taught. The best way I could see achieving this is to keep the progress we're going, or I'm writing with a slate of incumbents. And a lot of times, there's so much turnaround, everyone complains about how there's so much turnaround on the board itself. But if we keep changing leadership, we keep not sticking with one team, changes from the top trickle down.
Mr. Lear.
I started teaching when I was 16 years old. I was a state champion swimmer in school. And the thing I learned about children has consistency is exactly what they need to learn. You have to give them something the exact same way, or sometimes different ways, so that they actually understand what you're saying to them. If our programs aren't consistent, then we have to change that. We have to either make them consistent, or we have to create a new program so that these children can learn and give them what they need. Inconsistency isn't acceptable.
Mrs. Melgar. Good question, okay. The tutorial and academic programs don't always work. They appear to be uncoordinated and change on a whim, often losing our children because of these changes. How can you fix this?
I don't want to get enemies or anything like that. Because when I say something, they say, "Oh, don't say that because you're going to get enemies." We have to, how can I say? We have to work together for our children. We have to do our best for them. Because it's true, many people, they don't, many kids, they don't reach high school because they don't have the motivation. They don't have the, they just don't, we need to make something new for them. We need to work for them together.
Mr. Moore.
This might have been a past practice, but since I've been on the board, I've noticed the fact that the tutorial programs and the ancillary programs, if you will, are being coordinated and they're being coordinated to the point that we are moving toward a higher graduation level. We are moving toward a better, just general environment. So I would have to differ with the fact that the tutorial programs are held to skill because they are moving in a positive direction.
Mrs. Campbell.
We've actually done a better articulation between the community programs and the district in the past two years. What has happened is those community tutorial programs that have been identified have been funneled into the academic services department so that people who are offering tutorial services know exactly what's going on in the classroom. So is it tweaked to the nth degree? Probably not, but it's a lot better than it was because there is a connection between the community and the school district, and they're coordinating their efforts.
Mrs. Clark.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. The tutorial and academic programs don't always work. They appear to be uncoordinated and change on a whim, often losing our children because of these changes. How can you fix this?
I feel as though if they be consistent with the curriculum and stop changing, all the children will learn. It's only because they keep moving it is why they're not learning and obtaining and taking it in. But they stick to the program, stick to the program, and I believe that the children will learn and they will observe it.
Last question. What is your top goal or priority if you are elected? Mrs. Campbell.
If re-elected, my goal is for us to continue on the trajectory we've already started, and that is academic excellence for all of our students. Those who are interested in vocational areas to make sure that those opportunities are there, those who are interested in college, attending college, that those opportunities are there. I want to continue the successes that we've started, support the administration, and work collaboratively with our community. I would continue the progress that we've made.
Mr. Moore.
When I decided that this would probably be one of the things that I really wanted to do as something that I could give back to the community, I wanted to make sure, and I still want to make sure, that we have a STEM program, we have a STEM school, we have gifted and talented, a gifted and talented program, K-12, every one of the building in the city. Now, I heard something about curriculum and all, curriculum changes and all the rest of those things. That's another piece I'll talk about at another point in time. But I do want to have gifted and talented, K-12, every building in our district.
Mrs. Clark. I just wanted you to repeat the question, so. Yes, it's, what is your top goal or priority if elected?
If I'm elected, I can bring energy to the board. But my priority is that every student graduates from Plainfield High School with the right curriculum and the right standards, they can do it. I don't want to be just a figurehead on the board. I want to be a board member doing the job and getting the work done.
Mrs. Melgar.
I have been challenged by my grandchildren. That motivates me to, to work very hard and every single student in the school system. And I will do my best and as I said, and put all my passion to do my best and to do with the team, to work, you know, as a team together and to do the work that we have to do. Thanks.
Mr. Lear.
The first thing I would do is change this report card. This can't happen anymore. The second thing I would do is get us out of having priority schools or focus schools. They're not acceptable. I think the way we do that is we start at the top and we work our way down. We get our administration to evaluate our instructors and get our instructors on the right path so that our students get what they deserve. I am a great negotiator, I've sat on a lot of committees, as I've said before. I am very willing to work with anyone who wants to make a difference in our town.
Mr. Rutherford.
I'll try to get two in one minute. The first one would be to continue the dual-language program. Because of the fruits that being bilingual has brought to me, I think that it would help all of our children, even after early childhood, if they were able to learn English and Spanish. The way it is now, there's people who are learning English and ESL, and they're English speakers. But with a few tweaks, we can have all the students learning both languages. And that, and people pay a lot of money for that service in more affluent communities. We can incorporate that into our school system at little to no extra cost, and we ought to do it.
And that brings us to our final portion of this part of the program, and that is the closing statements. Again, the order was drawn and you have, each candidate has two minutes for their closing. And Mr. Rutherford, you go first.
As a lifelong Plainfield resident, I always knew the powers that be were arrogant and took us for granted. But I'm shocked by their audacity this time. They're running a slate of candidates who has attended zero board meetings. What do they think about us, the people of Plainfield? Maybe it's telephile eyes at the polls, nipple for anybody. Mr. Lear's beautiful Madison Avenue home is two blocks from Plainfield High School where meetings take place. If we take it by his word that he's been trying to run for the last two years, that means he's missed 48 meetings, 0 and 48. Would you accept the PTO treasurer at Emerson who'd never been to a PTO meeting? How about church-going folks? Would you want a deacon who's never attended a service? Now, when I get married someday, I want to hire a wedding planner who's been to a wedding. It's laughable, and you're laughing because they haven't won. If they are allowed to win, this comedy becomes a tragedy. Because this isn't a wedding, this isn't even a church deacon or even a PTO treasurer, this is the entire school district of Plainfield. These are all of our children at stake. So three years on the school board is a serious commitment that you can't just give away to people who've never been there before. In the interest of those children of whom I spoke, I strongly encourage you to vote 2, 3, 5. Keep hope alive. That's Campbell.
Please, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Clark. Audience, please, we're getting to the close. Mrs. Clark.
First, I would like to thank the women being voters, and I thank everyone of you for coming out. Thank you so much. Richard Lear and Deborah Clark and Melgar and Annabella Melgar is elected. We will be an advocate for your children. The stakes are high. Our children's education is at risk, so we can no longer sit back and just accept things that currently exist. We will work with the teachers towards the students' development and continue growing so they can achieve academic excellence. So now is the time to make a difference. Go and vote for change on November the 5th. We must prepare them, our children, we're talking about, for the future on November the 5th. Remember to vote for me, Deborah Clark, and my running mates, Annabella Melgar, Richard Lear. That is number 1, 4, and 6, Annabella. And I thank you so much.
Mr. Moore.
Yes. I am committed to continue the forward-reaching educational goal of the Board of Education. You hear me say forward-reaching educational goal? Not going to go backward and do some of the things that I've heard. That goal is to move our students to be career-ready so that they can make sure, so that they can be the leaders of the 22nd century. I will continue to promote advanced placement, overground affiliation, college association, craft meetings. And I want to make sure that our students are advancing as well as they can and even beyond that. So what I'm asking for you to do is to make sure that you vote for a group of folks who understand what the educational process is. So I'm asking you to vote for 2, 3, and 5. Would you vote for 5? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Melgar.
Thank you so much for having us here. And you all have sat here and listened to excuses, but we have no longer accept excuses and alibis. We need to change the way we need to do things if we want our children to achieve. So if you want, you change. Vote for Annabella Melgar, number 1, Richard, number 4, and Barbara. And I know these people are very genuine. I know them. Since the moment I spoke to them and we gathered together for many to study and to know what's going on, I know they are very genuine. Thank you so much.
Mr. Lear.
Since I moved to Plainfield, I discovered a theme. People in power break rules, the policies or whatever, and then they say, "Oh, I didn't know, I'm so glad you told me, now I know I can do better." The comptroller of New Jersey said that the board hired a law firm without properly vetting them. The comptroller said in 2011 alone, that law firm charged $21,000 in fees for just opening files and $38,000 in fees for attending board meetings, which was in the retainer. It's not acceptable for this to go on. The comptroller also says that by hiring this law firm, Plainfield spends $71 per pupil in legal fees and the state averages $36 per pupil in legal fees. That's almost double. We can't accept this. You can't sit on a board for nine years, whatever, two years, and say, "I don't know the policies, I've been studying them, I'm not a board member." No, I haven't been, I haven't had the ability at this time. I'm clearing my schedule so I can. I'm clearing my schedule so that I know the policies, I know the rules, I can work with people to make sure our children get an education. I don't think our existing board think our children are capable of what they really are capable of. I want them to have more. I want them to reach further. If you vote for Annabella Melgar, Deborah Clark, and Richard Lear, we will work diligently to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Oh, contrae. This board absolutely This board absolutely, positively has worked to push excellence in the district. You took me away from my prepared closing statement, but I'll go to that now. People, wake up, our children are watching. Mr. Green and his trainers went out and recruited, handpicked this motley crew, and had the nerve to expect the voters of Plainfield to turn educating our children over to him. No way, absolutely no way. Our children are too important to be thrown to the wolves. Mr. Green's political style of pump them and dump them has no place in our educational arena. He clearly states he runs slates so he can select the vendors of the district. Mr. Lear comes along identifying all the problems, no solutions. He's never attended a board meeting. We had a wonderful opening of our science labs last night, I didn't see one member of the Green team. Yes, the dream team was in attendance. Mr. Lear, who identifies all these problems, stumbled into the last debate, which happened to have been in the fourth ward. Oh my God, nobody wants to go to the fourth ward, really? Well, one of the bloggers said that that was not a worthwhile debate. Why? Because it's in the fourth ward, stop. Many of our children reside in the fourth ward, don't write them off. Look, on November 5th, there is a dream team for our children running. 2, 3, and 5, keep hope alive, bury the Green team.
Please give a round of applause to all the candidates. At this time, I would like to call up Mrs. Rivers.